In a bit, Mark is the recording ready?
Ready, let me know when you're ready.
Mayor, we are like.
All right, okay, well, first of all, I want to say good afternoon to everyone at this point, I'd like to open up the ballpark, special city council meeting along with the planning commission as well today is July the 22nd, the time is six o'clock. So at this point, I will go ahead and we'll do the the flag salute, that's right. Okay, so this one, I will ask everyone to please stand. And we'll go ahead and pledge, well, in this case, right? Ready, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, all right, thank you, thank you very much for being here. So go ahead and take roll call. So Shannon, do you want to take roll call?
Sure. We had Lulu here, I think we had Lulu here too.
I am here.
Yes. Oh, thank you, you mind taking roll call, please?
Of course, mayor, thank you. Councilmember Alejandro Abida.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Emayala.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Paul Hernandez. Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much.
Planning, I'm sorry, we're doing planning commissioner as well, mayor.
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Edith Flores.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Christopher Garrido.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Marlon Garcia.
Present.
Vice Chair Edwin Borges.
Here.
And Chair Christopher Sands.
Present, thank you.
All right, just want to thank everyone for joining. So the we is Monica, Council Monica Garcia there as well? So she will maybe join, maybe join us shortly. So, all right, so at this point, we're going
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, all right. Yes, now I could, yeah, thank you very much.
Laura did the roll call and I said here, I want to make sure she counted me in. Laura, did you hear me? Yes, councilmember. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So at this point, I'll open up the public communication. So I will ask our deputy city clerk.
Mayor, your sound is really bad.
Anyone submitted any letters, anything for
Mayor, your audio connection is really bad.
Mr. Mayor, before we have Lulu, go into what she's, I just wanted to remind everybody that we've got phone calls.
Okay. Anyone hear me? Can you hear me now, where I'm at right? Okay, hold on, let me. Are you guys hearing guys?
I would encourage everybody that's not speaking to mute, it might help a little bit.
Yeah, that was.
You able to hear me?
It's a little sporadic, mayor.
Can you hear me better, everyone or not?
That's better, yes.
All right, so I did, so at this point, do we have any? Did we get anyone submitting any letters or anything for public communication? Deputy City Clerk?
Mayor, we did receive a letter that this person wanted to have this letter be read into the record. However, our protocol is that now they have to call in. And so this was emailed to the planning commissioners and the city council members. Also, this particular communication is not part of the agenda. And so I'd recommend that it's up to the chair, but I'd recommend that we just email them to to counsel and the commission.
And mayor, if I could, if I could remind everybody that we've gone to the phone in system so that people can speak live. And also the Brown Act requires that comments on a special meeting only are allowed to address the topics that are covered in the special meeting. So I think with that, we unless you have any others, Lulu, we probably have no oral communications, although any written communications will be distributed to everybody.
All right, okay. So at this point, then I will go ahead and make a motion to close the public communication. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by councilmember Gina Yala, any objections? If not, at this point, we'll go ahead and move on. All right. So at this point, we're gathered today and I want to thank all the planning commissioners, all the planners as well that have joined us today. I think it's an opportunity for us to be able to look at the potential projects in the future of working together with different ideas. So I guess I'll give this over to Mr. Ron Garcia.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, city council and planning commission. It's been about eight months in the making since we received the SB two grant to be able to facilitate this process and updating the downtown specific plan. And then bringing it forward to the council and approving contract with the Runwalla Associates to update the downtown specific plan. And again, to facilitate the development of higher density residential and mixed use currently permitted in the city. I would like to introduce the consultant Kaiser Runwalla. He will manage the overall project. He will be the lead and manage all aspects of the project in preparation of the TOD specific plan. And also coordinating the subconsultants and working with staff along with the public. Kaiser has over three decades of multi-disciplinary private and municipal sector experience in virtually all aspects of drafting and implementing general plans and specific plans. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Kaiser Runwalla.
Thank you, Ron, mayor, members of the council, planning commissioners, as well as members of the community. Great honor to be here and to talk to you, albeit remotely. By the way, please let me know if you cannot hear me correctly, clearly, or if you want me to speak loudly or clearly. I'll just continue and I'm hoping at some point we'll get into a dialogue. The purpose of this meeting primarily is to kick off this process and and introduce the team that that will work on this project and review the project scope and schedule, make sure the community is comfortable with that and review some of the civic engagement strategies we are proposing. At the same time, discuss the actions that we will be taking in the next few months and lay out those dates so that you can pencil them in your calendar early on and then answer any questions that you may have. So that's really my portion of what I want to present. But I'm hoping that a bulk of this meeting can be in 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 a discussion format. What I'd like to receive input, my team would like to receive input from the city council planning commission and the general public. And know your thoughts on the downtown and mayor and planning commissioner chair, city manager with your permission, if I may pose a couple of questions that I want you to think so when you are speaking, you have focus on those two questions. The first one is, and I know that number of you were involved in the previous specific planning effort and have lived in the city for their entire lives, some for decades. So if you can recall a pleasant experience from your childhood in the downtown area. And and you know, this experience, this this experience that you may have is still there or you miss it. And if you can tell us what are some of the changes that you would like to see in the downtown? So these two specific questions, a pleasant memory that you have of the downtown from your childhood. And what are some of the changes that you would like to see in the downtown? So with that, I'll introduce a team. More than Polosoid will be assisting us with the overall visioning process, creating a vision, working with the community to develop a bold and compelling vision for the downtown area. Stefanos Polozoids and Vinayak Baney are architects and planners. You may recall their work on number of gold stations such as Pasadena, a number of gold stations in Pasadena, as well as in South Pasadena, where they've actually not just planned, but also built projects, TOD projects. And we have worked with them and all of the team members that you're seeing, we sort of play from the same playbook and we worked on numerous projects together and we can, we can get to transformative change pretty fast because we all headed in the same direction. We all sort of have worked with each other for a long, long time and complete each other's sentences. Kittleson and Associates will be helping us with our mobility and parking opportunities and challenges. And they are principal, they are Tim Orney, Fernando Sotelo and Michael Sahimi. And then Michael Wright is with Eunice Consulting and he'll be helping us understand the market, the downtown market and as it relates to the larger Southern California market. But then he'll be also doing a couple of other steps, which I think are critical. And one of the reasons why we're doing this plan just four years after its adoption. He'll be assisting us with development feasibility. So that the standards that we come up with, we want to make sure that they are feasible to build. And also assisting us with fiscal impacts. So at the end of the day, how is this going to help the city, the overall city in terms of property tax, sales tax? And 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 attracting investment while the same time retaining existing investment that you have within the downtown area. Rincon with Joe Powers and Suzanne Huetta will be assisting us with environment documentation for this, for this purpose. And then Dave Snyder is gonna, he's a landscape architect and he's going to help us take a look at a very important concept that we rely on in our work for downtown plans. And that's how the public realm, how the streets and the open spaces are used within the, within the downtown area, not just by the automobile, how do you get around, but the automobile, how do people get around? And he'll be helping us in the design of the public realm. And then the last person is Ian Espinoza. He'll be helping us with some, creating some illustrations. Ron, could we have the next slide, please? Okay, so I think this is, I've been talking to Ron and this is a question, and it's a very reasonable question, saying, why are we doing this? Why are we doing a specific plan just four years after its adoption? And and as a city council person and perhaps even planning commission, you know, you often get certain mandates and you have to do this. You know, there's a stop sign, you must stop. There's a state mandate that requires you to do X, Y, and Z, and you must do this. So that's a have to. And then there was a need to saying, you know, it makes a lot of sense to do this. And that is why we're doing it because there are certain things that we need to fix. And I think the third one, which is, which is what I'm hoping that will gravitate towards the end of this evening is we want to, that this is something that we all desire. The downtown development is the city's best opportunity to increase its property tax, its sales tax revenue and to maintain and enhance the retail and small business core for the city. During this global crisis and even after, I think most cities are heavily and severely cash strapped. Like your city, many cities are forced to make cuts to staffs and services. Having a compelling vision for the downtown plan that is ready to go ahead is going to be a huge incentive for Baldwin Park to attract investments that will allow the city to continue providing core services, not just to the downtown, but to the entire city. So this is, this is a a strategy moving forward. And then as we, as we look beyond the health crisis and look at housing crisis and look at these equity crisis. Offers a cogent response to address these concerns that that plague Southern California cities. And then if you are, depending on where you stand on the climate change was an existential concern looming over Southern California, this downtown plan also allows you to address in a very cogent manner, the impacts of climate change. The funding for this downtown plan is through a state grant, but that's not the primary reason. Again, I would reiterate that it's a very timely and a best opportunity to craft a renewed vision and a, in a friendly code, a streamlined code that offers clear and precise standards for the downtown. And the revenue and investments it will attract will allow us to continue providing again core services to the entire city. So the downtown and the, and the city have this unique relationship. The downtown is your, is your civic core, it is also your transit core, it is for a number of events. Your entertainment and recreation core within the city. So and retail core within the city. So what happens with the downtown impacts the entire city. Next slide, please. So in terms of a specific plan, there are three things that we look at. And then this is looking at how do you create a distinctive place? How do you create a distinctive advantage for Baldwin Park downtown? And it begins with place. And and obviously the people and and the commerce that you have within that area. And it's the intersection of all of these three things that creates resilient prosperity, lasting prosperity. In terms of people, we're looking at trained workforce to address issues of social equity and social capital and to address public health. As we come out of this COVID, we certainly want to have the downtown function like it traditionally has, which is to gather people, but now with an increased challenge of social distancing to gather in a safe manner. So we need to address that, that that was a challenge that wasn't with us four years ago when, when the city adopted the previous specific plan. In terms of business attraction and business retention, the downtown again offers a cogent response to creating a place, creating tourism. I through, through some of the field work and some of the discovery work that we have begun to do on the downtown area, we learned that you have events that drop people from the region. And I was very surprised that, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a unique opportunity and a unique unique opportunity to leverage those, those, those events to attract and retain businesses. And then looking at small business entrepreneurship, not just retail. Now, as we look at retail itself, that industry is changing. In what used to be 4% to 5% of sales online has now blossomed into 25% and it's constantly increasing. So our retail landscape is changing and we need to address that in in the downtown specific plan. What is the future of retail? Next slide, please. So as we look at branding and creating that unique identity, the place really becomes your brand, the downtown place becomes a brand for Baldwin Park, the distinctive resources, the cultural expressions with the arts and culture and recreation programs that the downtown offers. And then the core competencies that are unique to Baldwin Park as a place that no other place in in this area has. And then how we communicate that, where we communicate and when we communicate and become part of that branding experience. Next slide, please. So the things that we're looking, looking at and creating that unique place is leveraging the arts and cultural resources that you have within the downtown area. Making sure that the architecture, urban design, landscape design is of the very highest quality. And the codes are precise and clear about that, but also offer as a, as an incentive, a streamlined review process. Looking at streets and mobility, health and wellness, making sure that the downtown is a resilient environment so that when, when you encounter either natural or manmade events such as the one that we are going through right now through this global pandemic, that you're not just ready to bounce back, but you're ready to bounce ahead because you, you, you look at creating a very resilient environment and then looking at innovation, innovation in mobility as well as innovation in some of the industries that are present in, in Baldwin Park and seeing how we can leverage those to create a unique experience within the downtown area. Next slide, please. So in terms of streets, streets are obviously for mobility, but they are not just for primarily for moving cars and storing cars. They are also a place for commerce, a place for recreation. And looking at streets and the unique presence within the context, some perform the role of being an arterial. It's, it's an experience where you want to get from A to B without encountering whatever is in between. And that's, that's a unique role for a street. But then there is a local street or a main street environment, which is not a drive through experience. And and looking at all aspects of street design to make sure that it's serving both the local as well as regional mobility need, but also creating a place because streets are incredibly important component of your public realm and the signal the private realm and how that private realm gets developed. If a street is, for example, pedestrian friendly, then the development is likely to embrace that rather than back up to it and you, you have those components, both of those components in your downtown area. Next slide, please. And we want to look at what idea of, again, as I mentioned earlier, mobility, the, the how people get around. And I'm seeing specifically people, not cars. Because the objective of, of a, of mobility is not a trip, but is access. Wherever you want to go. And looking at what idea of options, when you get off that station, what is that experience? What are the options available to get around and looking at micro transit? What idea of micro transit options that can be programmed in and around the station that provide and extend that, that access, you know, looking at the first mile, last mile linkages. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we're proposing is, is a, is a different approach to coding. As I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that our codes are precise and clear as well as offer a streamlined approach. Most of the codes sweat a whole lot of time on worrying as to what happens in the private realm, what happens inside the building, what happens on the private lot. There is very little guidance on the design of the public realm. This is the public realm that is shaped by the private facade. So if you can, if you can look at the graphic in that graphic, you have buildings on either side and everything that is encompassed within that area is a public realm. Most courts don't give you any direction on how you design that. The codes that we are writing put the emphasis on the design of that. The design of the frontages, for example, the design of the sidewalk experience, a design of the on-street parking, the landscaping. And we, we are also aware that you have a number of improvements that are either underway or have taken place over the years. And we want to work with those and integrate those improvements in the public realm. The other concept is typically, and this is getting a little nerdy, so but, but I hope you follow me. You look at the graphic to the right. Most of your codes have standards that dictate how much you can build on that lot. For example, codes might have a standard such as an FAR, which is a Florida ratio. Now, in simple speak, that means that if I have an FAR of one, I can take my lot area and extrude it like a tub of butter, one story tall. Does that make sense? So if I have one FAR, I can build one story building. What if I told you if I have one FAR, I can also build an eight story building? I can on eighth of a lot. I just use a smaller portion of the lot and go up as high as I can. So the codes need to be precise. In some codes, you have minimum setbacks and those minimum setbacks are 10 feet or 15 feet. And and if I were to ask you, where can you place a building, for example, with that setback requirement? You would tell me 15 feet, you would be right. You would tell me 150 feet and you'd still be right. It's not telling you where to place it, it's just saying a minimum standard. So what happens is when people come in, put the buildings 150 feet back, you get huge parking lots in the front. So we want to address that. The other aspect is design guidelines. Now, what design guidelines does is, as you look at the graphic again to the right, is how do you articulate that building? How do you break it up? How do you dress it? What kind of clothes do you put? How do you articulate it? What masses you pull back or pull up? But the graphic at the bottom is what we want to get at, is how do you create different building types for different contexts? So if you have a main street environment, that's a completely different building type. It could be a flex building or a three-story apartment building or a courtyard housing. But as it backs up to single family residences, it follows the context that you see in the residential streets. The street design, the design of open spaces, the design of building are all laid out in that contextual manner. So next slide, and hopefully this will explain what I'm talking about. This is a project that one of our team members, Molen Polozoid, did in South Pasadena. To the left is, is what you're seeing, the code, what the amount of intensity that the code would allow. So the code would essentially allow, as again, as I told you in FAR, it will allow you to exclude that building two stories. And you can cover it all up and the building could be a block scale building, a block of a building. But that block of a building would not be appropriate for its context because the context is single family residential neighborhood. So the courts that we write actually require that context to be established in the design of the building. So for example, where the train lines are, the goal line station is you have a smaller block building, but as it goes back into the residential neighborhoods, you still have apartment buildings, but those apartment buildings are essentially in large homes. In buildings that look like large homes that sit across existing homes and it's creating contextual blended density that is appropriate for the area. So as you are looking particularly at this specific plan to increase some of the intensities that are allowed in the downtown to make it pencil for the development community, to make it financially feasible. Contextual density becomes incredibly, incredibly important. And that's what we are hoping to address in the court. Next slide, please. So parking is, is an important component. And obviously, it's you know, most of the people in the community drive and you want to have parking, but you don't want to have parking skew your urban environment. And we, the good news is that you have a lot of assets in your underutilized parking areas. But we're going to do a parking study to get an understanding of how much parking do you actually need? And then figure out a parking management plan to reduce the demand and and to use existing supply and to manage the existing supply while creating an urban form that encourages people to and to manage the existing supply while creating an urban form that encourages people to drive less and walk more. Next slide please. So we're proposing a variety of civic engagement strategies at different points of, of the process. And I wanted to share this with you at this point so that you can put those, these dates on your calendar. By the way, we're too early in setting those games and we're completely flexible in setting these dates. So if these dates don't work for you, let us know and we can, we can work around. But it's incredibly important that you participate in these meetings. We have, we have an online presence, we have a Facebook page, we're going to soon have a website. Where we'll post a lot of information. We went out and took the project tour with city staff. We're conducting interviews tomorrow and the day after. And then we have focus group meetings where most of the work will be done, starting on September 29th. The first focus group meeting is to get an understanding of where the city is, doing discovery work, getting qualitative information from people that we cannot just get from reading plans and reading data and, and numbers and maps. And then we move on to the shred, the visioning shred is a three-day process and I'll talk about what that, what that entails. But it's in October and then a series of joint planning commission meetings and, and city council meetings, just as a one we were having. Next slide please. Okay, so in terms of the process, the process is a fairly simple process. It starts with discovery work and we, we spend about three or four months trying to understand the people, the place, the market, the mobility patterns, the parking patterns within the community. And we're doing that in two ways. We're getting it from the information that we can glean from documents. But we're also getting it from focus group meetings, from interviews, from talking to people, from having focus group meetings. So it's both qualitative and quantitative. And then we, we have this meeting primarily to make sure that we have a good base understanding of where the city is, where the downtown is today. And what are some of the trends that are impacting the downtown area? So with that, charged with that discovery information, then our next move is to have a shred. And that shred is a three-day process. It's a visioning shred where we it's, it's open to the members. And by the way, all of these meetings are open to them, all of them, the entire public. And the shred is primarily the heart of the process where we work three days within the community. Now, if we may be in a lockdown situation going into October, November, so we may be doing this remotely. And we will, we will make the necessary adjustments, but our goal is to engage the community during those three days. And at the end of the three day, we're hoping to have a, a, a community-driven vision ready for the downtown area. So once we have the vision ready, once we know, we've looked at all the options that are available and selected a preferred option of how we want to see downtown redevelop, preserve and grow and reinvest in the future. The next question, how do we get there? What policies, what strategies do we need to have in place? And that's the next focus group meeting. We're thinking at this point somewhere in the January, February timeframe. And then once we do that, we're off to the races, we're producing the document, doing the environmental documentation necessary. Before we begin the environmental documentation, we'll have, we'll bring it back to this forum, the joint meeting. Because we want to make sure that whatever vision, whatever growth potential that we are projecting, that the planning commission and city council are both comfortable with it. Because we will be doing environmental documentation based on that. So we want to make sure you're comfortable before we start the documentation for, for that, for that vision and for that projection. And our goal is to have this ready for adoption in the July, August timeframe. Next slide please. So I mentioned the shred and the shred is a three-day process. It's an iterative process where we work within the community. Typically, in this case, it would be remotely. We work three days. In the afternoon, we have noon talks. These talks talk about certain aspects related to your community or some of the trends such as market assessment, development strategy, what are some, some of the key elements of a successful downtown, some of the mobility trends and opportunities that are available. And then the evening, we, we present some concepts. And we open them up for discussion. We get your feedback, we get your comments. We work through the night, we work the next day. And then in the evening, we present saying, we heard you, you're the, here's how we responded. We worked through that loop for two, three days. At the end of the third day, we're hoping that we have addressed most of the comments and we have we have a master plan for the downtown area. Next slide please. So these, these are typically the, the level of detail that we work on in terms of the public realm, but also with the private realm, we're working with developers who have either ENAs or agreements with the city or have expressed interest or have current proposals to make sure that they are placed in an optimum manner in terms of public realm design and integrated completely within the fabric of the downtown. Next slide. So the next steps are again, as I mentioned earlier, we're conducting interviews tomorrow, focus group meetings in September, on September 29th. And then visioning shred on 13, 14, then 15. Now, while we're working three days, we're not expecting you to be there for three days with us. We expect you, we would encourage you to be there during the afternoon, noon talk. It's probably an hour and a half around lunchtime and I would imagine you'd serve lunch. If, if it's remotely, then, then I don't know how we, how we, how we accomplish that, but it will still be around the noon hour. So noon to one, we'll have a talk and then in the evening, we'll present some concepts and gather feedback from you and then go back and work some more, come back the next day, present some new concepts and some refinements and work through that process for three days. The web address that you see, the domain has not been activated as yet. But we're hoping that within a month's time, we'll have a website for the project where we'll post most of the documents coming out and most of the outcomes coming out from the meeting. Now, I want to stop you and I want to also urge you by, by, by saying this, this process works if you participate. And, and I'm, I'm, I know the body that I'm talking to, which is the city council and planning commission. And typically what we see is the processes that are successful are the ones where the planning commission, the city councils involved in the focus group meeting, the shreds. The processes that don't work in the most optimum manner are the ones that wait for the very final adoption date. And I think that's too late. The planning needs to happen before the adoption dates are to make decisions. So we would encourage you to participate, but at the same time also encourage you to bring in your family and friends to participate as well. Because we want to make sure this plan represents everybody's vision, not just the vision of the people that sign in for, for, you know, a Zoom session like this one. So when we have the shred and we have the focus group meetings, we want to have a, a good turnout and a good representation and a good process and a good question of a broad range of topics. And we're going to request you to help us gather people for, for those meetings. So with that, I will stop and I will be happy to answer any questions, comments, feedbacks. From, from you all.
Kaiser, I, I think I understood that was your name. I'm sorry. This is council member Monica Garcia. And I'm, I'm just glad that you touched on, thank you so much. That was very comprehensive for an overview. And I'm glad that you touched on the design guidelines. And I think that in this process, we would probably, and I, I say we because of conversations that have been had on the, on the council before. We would really be interested in, in looking at how we can standardize the design of, you know, new developments that come into the city, specifically in our downtown area. And Ron Garcia can share some of the background, but we've really had some missed opportunities where there have been new developments that were just so they just, they, they were not aesthetically pleasing, let's just say that. And we, we missed the opportunity as far as, you know, bringing in a nice building that had a good design. And that was functional. So I really would, I just want to share from my, from my perspective, that's going to be an important piece in this process. And it's going to be, you know, for me, it will be mostly the design of the buildings. So it could be the setbacks or the, like you say, articulation or the massing, just how the building presents itself. And of course, you know, with the street guidelines and sidewalks and things like that, that's of interest as well. But for me, I just want to share that the building design guidelines are important for me in this process. And then as far as the density, so I fully understand, you know, your comment and appreciate your comment about creating or encouraging development, developers to come into the city and to see what is allowed by rider and, you know, how encouraging that could be for them. And having worked in for a real estate development company, I'm in favor of that. But I also want to be careful about, you know, how much density we allow. And so what I would ask in this process is if you could share with the, the planning commissioners and the city council and perhaps in these, in the, what was it, the, the vision shred activities, if you could share the types of density, what it looks like to have 15 units per acre, 35 units per acre. Because I think that, you know, that will be very informing to the, the community and to us. Is that something that you could do?
Councilman, you just laid out the agenda for the, for the second talk by Stefanos Polozoids. One, one thing that you can help us with is just mandate, require everybody to attend that. Because Stefanos is, is, you know, Ron's worked with Stefanos before and he knows him. He's one of the leading architects and I think one of the best architects of contextual architecture. And some of the, some of the things that he presents are just incredibly important topics that address just what you said. How do you, how do you allow density? And what, what visualizing density? And, and, and making it contextual and creating standards that are precise and lean at the same time. Because, you know, oftentimes we, we regulate the wrong thing. Our codes are not the way they are due to lack of any attempt or any effort. But the effort is misplaced. And redirecting some of that effort is, is key. What, what I would also encourage, and this is something that we, we did in in Ventura where, where, when I was a municipal planner like Ron is, is actually using buildings as a learning opportunity. So if you have certain buildings in your, in your city that were approved and that were built, then doing a post-assessment, okay, now that it is built, what is it about this building that we like, that it got it right? And what are the concerns that we continue to have? And then address them. Sometimes, you know, you see a, you, you see a beautiful rendering, you're seduced by it and then you're surprised at what gets built. So, so there is, there is a lot of things that get lost in execution and having the discipline to go back and visit and learn from each and every project, successful ones as well as failures, actually creates really important thought process and important discussion that is productive with the planning commission.
Yes, well, thank you. That all sounds wonderful. Music to my ears. And finally, I would just, you know, for my comments, I would just say that there is just so much opportunity in our downtown area and the mix of uses will, will be so important. I think that having the mix of housing is, is just as important as, you know, some of these other like TOD uses. So looking at where we can, there's already single-family in the downtown adjacent areas. And so we've also brought in some multifamily, more recently, some affordable, some market rate. And that mix of housing and mix of income, I think also will serve our downtown area well. Because on the one hand, we want to provide affordable housing, but on the other, we also want to create disposable income for the downtown so that it can thrive and it can just be more synergistic. And in a, you know, built kind of those synergies built in with the mix of uses. And so those are my comments and I'll, I'll let it, I'll let others speak. But the other thing I was going to say too is on the focus groups, consider meeting with like Church of the Redeemer or St. John's or some of these other churches that have some of their members who live in the city. And I, I think that it would be nice to engage these types of organizations rather than just having like, let's say, a focus group at our community center and then asking people to come out. That's fine too, but just to kind of create some variety and also kind of go beyond the, the same, you know, the same people that will come out just to be able to reach beyond that. So that's it. Those are my comments, but thank you. Great presentation.
And thank you. Council members, commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
No, it's, it's Chris Sines.
Chris, Simon.
So thank you, Mr. Rangwalla, for the presentation. It was very informative and I also want to thank Ron and his team for securing this grant that made today's meeting possible. Just kind of want to add, I know the council member Garcia just touched on it. I know that we're likely going to use our ci- city marketing mediums to do outreach to the community, invite them to some of these focus groups and visioning meetings. But I, but I do second what council member Garcia just mentioned, that I think that we have to go a little beyond our conventional marketing tools and, and reach out to some of these organizations within our city to invite them to participate. I, I'm sure that our Facebook and Instagram and, and and other mediums are, are really helpful tools, but they don't necessarily penetrate the entire population. So that, that's just something I want to add. I'm, I'm scheduled for an interview tomorrow, so I can add my, my personal, personal thoughts. But again, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sins. Moving on, commissioners, council members? Anyone else?
Mayor, can I? One comment please.
Sure, sure.
Mayor, if, if I can request the council person and the planning commissioners to share some of their experiences from, from theirs, from, from growing up in Baldwin Park about downtown and also share some of their transformations or concerns that they have and what they would like to see in the downtown, that would be helpful.
Right. Thank you very much. All right. Who was it? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much Kaiser for, you know, giving us a very thorough background and understanding in regards to, you know, what we're looking at here. And again, Ron and his, and his team for seeking out the grant. The way I see the city is there are three primary, you know, areas of commercial, commercialization. You know, we have the downtown area, we have the area in which we have with Target along with Smart and Final and again Home Depot. Along with Smart and Final and again Home Depot, uh, area or shopping centers. The three, the, the distinct, uh, issues that I find with all of those is, including our downtown is. We don't have necessarily a destination location yet. Um, you know, as council member Garcia mentioned and Commissioner, uh, Sines also talked about, you know, the downtown. Is what I believe could that, could be that area. Uh, you know, right now, I think it's more primarily used as a thoroughfare. Um, on Ramona and, you know, on Main and Baldwin Park for most, uh, travelers. Um, so we need to be able to look about, you know, look in ways to make it more inviting for folks that. You know, live outside of the downtown area, but also as council member Garcia and council member, uh, Commissioner Sines mentioned. Is by building in, uh, you know, the residency with, you know, affordable and, you know, market rates, uh, housing in and around the downtown area. Certainly provides that base of, you know, foot traffic, but also begins to create that community. Um, or, you know, the segment of the community, um, of downtown, you know, what it could be of downtown. And when we look at also the type of businesses that we should be attracting. Uh, you know, these would be primarily, you know, uh, eateries of sit-down restaurants, uh, coffee shops, you know. Uh, Bobas, which we have already a few, but other creative restaurants, uh, or even community, uh, community coffee shops. You know, you'll find these, uh, in San Diego and Barrio Logan, uh, where they're, you know, they've been changing that area where it's. Become a destination for those that live there, but also outside of the, out, outside of the community. Um, that's rich with history, so, you know, we need to begin to begin, uh, establish that type of culture. Uh, mindset, uh, in our area. Um, so when we look at that, you know, we need to also look at the type of codes that, uh, we begin to. You know, eliminate or take away businesses, uh, in that area, um, that don't necessarily contribute to that vibrant. Uh, fostering community as we, as we're talking about. You know, there are existing businesses there that, you know, that, that are fine, but you know, when they. If they choose to leave at a later time, then we should take full advantage as to bringing in other type of, uh, venues and so forth. Um, I think, uh, council member Garcia, uh, once mentioned, you know, uh, in the past when we're discussing with some of the E and L, ENAs. Uh, having a community's, you know, venue where folks could come and gather and use. Um, uh, you know, for community meetings or community events or whatever it might be, that's outside of City Hall. Um, just another location, so again, it provides more foot traffic. Um, but, you know, one other thing of course is, as, as you mentioned, is mobility. Uh, mobility, you know, we have a, a good percentage of people that, you know, commutes and walk, um, and making that a little bit more inviting. Uh, for people that are on alternative, uh, vehicles, whether it's a electric scooter. Electric bike, which we'll be having here and here as part of the San Gabriel, um. Uh, partnership with, uh, with the cog and others. Um, i- it's, and it's important to be able to show people and more importantly, the drivers that are coming and going. Through our community that, you know, that we're receptive and we're open and it's safe to either walk. Or to ride a bike or a scooter or whatever the next form of innovative transportation that comes out in the next three to five years. Um, the other thing also to take, um, take into consideration is, you know, the traffic flow. Um, you know, it's similar to. How Caltrans looks at things and, you know, in some ways it's kind of backwards, you know, they, they build more capacity. Knowing that there's going to be more people driving where, you know, we should be looking at. Whether, what other type of incentives can we do to reduce people from driving? And using public transportation and or other, uh, forms of transportation. Uh, so I'll leave it at that and, you know, I welcome the, uh, conversations, um, you know, that are going to be happening over the next year and a half. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Vice Mayor, anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor Lozano, Commissioner Borkis.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner, thank you.
Kaiser, thank you so much for your presentation, I really enjoyed it. Um, speaking of childhood memories, as someone who has lived in Baldwin Park over forty-five years. You know, I remember, you know, as a kid, hanging out with my friends and. After, after going swimming, we would go pick up a thrifty ice cream cone, some soda pop. And then we would all go to the arcade, uh, it was just such a great hub, such a great meeting place, smiles all around. Um, uh, it was a, just a lovely childhood experience and, you know, we could, we could fast forward that to, to twenty, uh, to. To now, to the future by, you know, eateries which have games for adults like bean, beanbag tosses and dartboards. And you can have a drink during happy hour, uh, something around, uh, of that nature, but. You know, growing up in Baldwin Park was a, was a, just a terrific time. And, um, you know, I see, you know, some of those establishments where adults and kids could, uh, enjoy themselves at the same time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to share?
Mayor.
Yes, uh, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I, I just want to also thank, um, Kaiser, this is, uh, Councilwoman, um, Jean Ayala. And I too want to piggyback on what Commissioner, uh, Borkis was saying, because we, we have lived here our entire lives. Um, and I'm proud to say that, uh, I teach here and I work here and I just love Baldwin Park. But just, but just commenting on his, on his memories, I, I too remember, you know, swimming at the plunge. Eating the ice cream, going to the library, uh, those kinds of centered little areas with our families. I also remember the parade being on Main Street and coming to Ballpark Boulevard, then going back to Main Street and going back and forth. Uh, but, but just those, those, um, events where families were gathering. Uh, it, it, you know, it's, it's a wonderful place to live, it's a wonderful place to grow up. The things that I'd like to see, um, I think I would, I would kind of piggyback back on what, um, Commissioner Borkis was saying in terms of. More areas in terms to gather for families. Yes, we have the park and yes, we have our, um, events when we have those, but, you know, just, just other venues that might be. Um, accessible to them, because, you know, Main Street is a, is a thoroughfare, as is Ramona, as. Uh, Mayor Potem Hernandez mentioned, it's a major thoroughfare to go through to, you know, the, the neighboring community, but. We want them to stop and we want them to like, you know, use their money here, if they have an opportunity to do that. Um, but in terms of Main Street, I see it as a main thoroughfare and, you know, it's getting a, it, it's, it's needed uplift right now. But I think that at a certain hour, it just kind of goes quiet. And I thought, I thought you like creep pandemic, you know, um, so it, we just want to make it more accessible. Um, for families and for the community to use. Because I think growing up, and I don't know if Commissioner Borkis would, would agree with me, but I always remember, um, we're going to go out. Because we're going to go to the bank or we're going to go to the post office on that side and then you're kind of coming back, you know? It, it, it was like a, a purpose and then you come back, it was never like hanging out there. So, um, I think that our community has built itself up to the point where we need something like that and we would benefit from something like that. Um, so any, you know, uh, time that I can give you in terms of talking more about it, I would gladly, gladly talk about it, but I'd like others to. To have opportunity to share as well, but thank you so much, I want to also thank Ron and his team for securing all of that funding and did stuff like that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Yala, anyone else, commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioner Garrido here, how are you doing? Uh, Kaiser, thank you, thank you so much, uh, for that informative presentation, um. I just kind of wanted to piggyback a little bit about, you know, you were talking about accessibility. Um, and that's one thing that I, I, I've been doing some research on, uh, as of recent. Um, and especially here with the city of Baldwin Park and like our walking score, our biking score. Um, our transit score, what we have in the city and how to improve on that. Um, I feel that, you know, downtown is our heart, it sometimes seems like, you know, I know that Vice Mayor, um, Paul Hernandez had said, you know, we have the other. Areas of business, you know, main areas like the Target area, the, the Home Depot, um, and then downtown, but downtown is our heart. You know, it's our culture, um, and how do we, you know, uh, basically, you know, provide better. Access, whether it's walkability, bikability, um, you know, into that heart, uh, but mostly. Uh, even our, most of our grocery stores, right, our two biggest grocery stores besides Walmart are right there in downtown. You know what I'm saying, so, uh, just looking at it from that perspective, how the plan will cover, um, the health of our city, you know what I'm saying? Um, and looking at in, in, in different ways.
Uh, anyone else wishing to share any, um, input?
Mayor, this is.
Commissioner.
Marlene Garcia, thank you, uh, thank you Kaiser for your presentation, uh, just quickly, uh, I wasn't raised here in Baldwin Park, but I did raise. Two children in this community and, um, I never felt comfortable allowing them to walk alone. Uh, near the downtown area or through the downtown area, uh, just again because of the safety situation. So I think that's going to be a strong point for many parents in our community to ensure that, yes, their children can go to downtown. I'm talking about teenagers, that they can go downtown and feel safe, but also, uh, go to destination. Location so that, uh, these are venues that call to them, for instance, we have Menchies now and, and every time I drive by. Uh, when they were operational, the we, we would see, I would see lots of kids there with families. And so I think when they do the visioning, when we start doing the visioning process. We're going to see that families are going to ask for that, let's make it an area where, again, it's attractive, it's welcoming, it's inviting. It's safe, um, we're going to provide venues that families want to go to and, and enjoy. So it would be important to make it at a level where the families, uh, the individuals who attend these meetings will understand it. A lot of visuals I think would help, uh, so that people understand. You know, this, looking this way versus looking this way, right, Mayor, um, uh, I think it, it will help tremendously. Those are my comments.
Alrighty, anyone else wishing to share any information?
Mayor, this is Edith, uh, Commissioner Flores.
Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, everyone, um, thank you Kaiser, I really enjoyed that presentation and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be a part of this. Um, I wasn't raised here either, I, I, I moved to Baldwin Park in two thousand and six. So it's been like fourteen years already and, um, one of the things I would like to see, um, in downtown. Um, when I think about, I want to go to a restaurant, I want to go take my kids. Um, to, uh, family gatherings. Um, I think outside of Baldwin Park, usually I'll go next door, West Covina or go back to Eastelay where I was used to. Going to, um, but I want to be able to say, you know what, uh, a nightlife, um, also for adults. I want to be able to say, okay, let's go to downtown Baldwin Park, there's something there for us to do, um, so. That's basically what I, you know, one of the main things that I always think about, like, when I'm going to leave my house, where do, where am I going to go? I want to think Baldwin Park downtown, so, uh, I think that's, that's, um, that's my major point, thank you.
Thank you, co- Commissioner, anyone else?
Mayor, this is Alejandra.
Well, yes, Councilwoman Alejandra, good evening.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody, thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for your presentation, um, I look forward to, uh. Looking at the whole plan and, and putting everybody's, everybody's ideas in place so that we can better our downtown area. And speaking of, uh, childhood memories, I, I've lived here for, for over fifty-five years, that tells you my age. And, um, I recall the, the bowling alley, we used to go bowling as kids, we used to walk to the bowling alley. The theater that was right next to, to the police department, uh, thrifties where we would go have ice cream. And that was a hangout for us, um, besides going in and out after the football games. We would go in the evenings to hang out at the bowling alley and have a good time. Um, and back in the day, we would walk because our parents, uh, didn't drive us there. It actually was safe, uh, for us to go walk all the way to Morgan Park and for me, that was a distance. So I'm looking into, um, bringing in innovative, uh, places for our, for our young adults. And, and the families where they can go and have a good time. And so that's what I'm looking forward to, I'm really, I really miss those type of activities here in Baldwin Park. When I tell my kids about it, they're like, you're kidding me, there's no way you guys had a bowling alley or a theater here. So, um, that's what I look forward to, um, like Monica says, the, the aesthetics of the buildings is also very important. To integrate in so that everything looks, um, good and, and the same, really, we, we have, uh. One building looking one way, one color, and we really need to work on the way everything looks in the downtown area. But again, that was my experience here growing up in Baldwin Park, being able to walk to those areas and have a good time as a teenager and, and it was safe, I felt safe. We had a good time, we would come home and, and we had somewhere to go, we really had somewhere to go, we didn't have to go to West Covina, actually, West Covina didn't have a movie theater. Back then, so that's what I'm looking forward to, looking into bringing things like that, thank you.
Very much, Councilwoman Alejandra, Avila, anyone else? Alright, I think we're coming up to the time for the planning mission meeting, but, uh. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Really quick, I just wanted to, to say that I got a good chuckle when I heard Commissioner Borkis mentioned thrifty ice cream. Uh, because that was the first thing that came to mind when Kaiser asked, you know, what our memories were, so. I can completely relate to that, um, Commissioner and then also Councilmember Avila. I, I do want to mention that when I was a kid, I, I did grow up in Baldwin Park and I'm in my forties now. And when I was a kid, I would ride my bike to Morgan Park. And we would be in the swimming pool for most of the day during the summer. Um, or we'd be at the, you know, summer lunches or we'd go to the Boys and Girls Club. And then, uh, across the street, we'd grab our, our thrifty ice cream, that was a must always. I think at that time it was probably like twenty-five cents and a scoop and, um, and then you had like KFC, you know. Which was kind of fun after swimming and things like that, so I think what we're hearing is. Um, you know, there's been a lot of good memories established around getting together with friends and family and. Um, enjoying a meal or enjoying, now we have Menchies, which I was, I was happy to see that that is providing a space for families. Um, but like Councilmember Avila mentioned, after high school football games, we were just. Looking for places to hang out, there was a, a hamburger stand on Main Avenue that was just okay. But, um, you know, providing those type of places is important for our community and, and having those memories, establishing those memories in that community. Feel and I was on the planning commissioner when we approved Viamod, that was so different having. This bar restaurant, um, prior to that, it was a shady use and, um. Viamod has been a nice addition to our downtown area, I would encourage you Kaiser to visit Viamod. Um, because I think it's, it's an example, I mean, of how we would want to expand. On some, on uses like that where people gather for meals and, um, just to, just to, you know, have a drink perhaps. Share some, um, good conversation and, and establish some memories, so. I would, I would encourage you to take a look at like Menchies and Viamod and start to really think about. Other, um, companies that are looking to come to downtown. Centers or, and, um, you know, what types of uses we could, we could consider bringing. Um, that would really create that sense of place, kind of like what, uh, Mayor Potem Hernandez and, uh, I think Commissioner. Signs mentioned, so having that sense of place is, I think, very important, so, um, anyway, just wanted to share that.
Alright, thank you very much, uh, Councilmember, um, anyone else? If not, I'll go ahead and just, um, first of all, I want to tha- thank, uh, thank, uh, Ron Garcia, thank, Miss, uh, Mr. Um, Renat, what, um, Kaiser for. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for being here, uh, today and showing this, it's important for us to be able to concentrate on this master plan now. I've been on the city councils since, well, since nineteen ninety-four, planning commissioner nineteen ninety-two. Uh, back in nineteen ninety-two, the youngest mayor was elected to the city ballpark named Fidel Vargas, uh, who came in. Um, with a, with a, um, very aggressive, uh, agenda and we went through all kinds of different plans and, and, and I think we became like the cap, the, the city. That had the most master plans, uh, throughout the San Gabriel Valley and really, you know, never really, uh, uh, made that effort of moving forward on them and. I, I, I feel very optimistic now that we're in the twenty, twenty-first century that, uh, um, will address some of these and every council member here today. Address, basically some of the things that I wanted to share, I have been a resident of Baldwin Park for forty-one years, moved in on a Friday. At twelve oh one noon time, uh, drove up on Main Street and Main Street at that time, all the vehicles were parked diagonally. Very, most of you will recall, so it was really neat, so it gave me a sense of a small town environment, something similar to what the city of Covina has. What I enjoyed, uh, uh, of that most is they had a very popular burger place on Main Street that. Councilor Monica Garcia mentioned called, uh, Super, I think it was called Maine Burger, best burgers in town at that time. And the, the fun thing about, uh, La-. And the, the fun thing about uh living in Baldwin Park back in nineteen seventy-nine, I was going down to my nineteen seventy cent Malibu classic with my eight-track on, hearing the Isley Brothers, headed over to the drive-in where the current Kaiser's at. So there used to be a drive-in, so it was very unique to be able to go there, watch a, a movie and then come over to the bowling alley that we had where the current ninety-nine cent store is on Main Street and, and Baldwin Park, uh, Baldwin Park Boulevard and Ramona. So that was very unique. Of course, the pool that we had right across the street referred as, as to the, as, as to the plunge. And I think what a lot of our residents uh want to see is someplace where they could uh gather. I mean, a, a good example, a good example are the summer concerts at the park. Then they extend over to Main Street and Main Street is so neat because you literally have thousands and thousands of people that gather from, from, um, from uh Ramona Boulevard up to Clark Street and it's so unique and residents look for it. Of course, COVID nineteen uh comes around, the, the plans, of course, uh, have, have been postponed until the following year. But my, my, my biggest thing is to be able to have a downtown where like Edith, Commissioner Edith mentioned, so that where people could congregate, you could come together. And a good example as um, uh, Councilman Monica Garcia stated is Viamod, which for some odd reason, that seems to be like the biggest thing throughout the city right now. But it's a good gathering. It's a place where you have a restaurant and you have a bar, you have an outside patio. So it's, it's a multitude of, of different things that you do find in neighboring cities, but in Baldwin Park, you really don't. And what we also need to cater to is a third or fifth generation uh of, of population that we have in Baldwin Park that wants the same things that our neighbor, our neighboring cities have. We understand that you can attain them because of certain distances and so on and so forth. But I, I, in, in, if we could somehow convert that downtown as opposed to clinics, uh, and I know that we have some type of, I know the moratorium still in there with some of the clinics. The clinics for some odd reason have dominated our, our downtown area and we all, we obviously know that. But then we see like this tea coming in, which is a little tea place, it's very popular in downtown. If we could bring in these um types of little, um, um, I don't know what you call it, uh, sandwich shops or coffee shops or what have you. I think that would really be uh some, um, something that our residents would enjoy. And I'll give you a good example. On the corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Ramona, there's a new project going up there. That will be, I believe, our sixth Starbucks in Baldwin Park along with some other eateries that are yet to be announced in that area. And those are, those are walkable areas. So when you're on Ramona from, actually from from, um, I should say, actually from Ramona up to as far as Baldwin Park Boulevard, the, the streets, uh, the businesses are set back. So you have those driveways in between where vehicles park. So these are, these are walkable areas and I think i- i- we could attract uh some types of restaurants or some type of um little small eateries. I think that would make a, a major change because a lot of people want to hang out somewhere and we need to address that, especially for our young kids. About twenty years ago, we had a, we had a little small restaurant type and it was way ahead of its time. It was called a graffiti, graffiti retreat. So it was a little coffee shop, little sandwich place, you go in there, you kick back and hang around, turn your computer on and, and, you know, enjoy and, and meet up with people. And if that, that was way ahead of its time, it would be there now, I think it would be successful. So, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward and I'm glad, glad that we had an opportunity to get all the input from all the customers and, and commissioners because I think we're really motivated and, and, and seeing something materialize, something that, that, that will be useful and that we could place on track and, and make it happen. Because and I'll end by saying, Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Hernandez stated, Main Street itself i- is, is a thoroughfare for the West Covina residents coming north on Main Street to Arrow Highway and right up to the two-ten freeway. So now with some of the grants that we've received, we've changed it into a two-lane versus a four, four-lane and that's going to extend all the way uh south onto uh West Covina. I have heard residents complain about that, but I think eventually once it be, once they, they see how the traffic flows differently, that, that hopefully that'll, that'll bring some type of mu- much tranquility to those areas as opposed to having a, a raceway uh versus traveling at a much more lesser speed than, than, than what, than what's attained at this point. But other than that, I, I'm excited. I'm looking forward and, and thank you very much for taking your opportunity to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, can I sum up a, a couple of comments, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to, uh, you know, I have three daughters and, um, you know, oftentimes their childhood memories as they were growing up, I remember we used to go to downtown areas and we would enter the stores and inside the store, we would find a candy machine. And I, I'm sure you have encountered these, uh, where you put in a quarter and, and you wait. Uh, and the candy goes round and round and round and round in a spiral and then eventually it comes down in the bottom and you eat that candy. Now, in terms of service and product, it's the same candy. You can buy it cheaper in bulk. And, and uh, the product isn't any better. But what it offered was an experience. And, and I think that experience is key as we are looking to uh create a cogent response to internet retailing. Because the experiences that many of you shared from your childhood, I, I wonder somehow, uh, and, and I ask this question of myself, if my daughters will have some of the same experiences that I had growing up, you know, walking to the ice cream store. Uh, well, you have two ice cream stores, two Miko Kanas in a block. I haven't seen that anywhere else. But do you walk to those places? Do you hang around uh those places? What are the experiences that you get uh in, in, uh, in engaging with that merchandise, with that product? Because product is no longer, the store definition is changing. It's no longer a place to buy a product because you can buy that product cheaper online and it will come next day at your doorstep. So it's the experience and we want to shape that uh and, and look at uh that experience in, in the downtown area so that our kids uh have pleasant stories to, to, to share uh with their future generations just as we had uh this evening. I, I really appreciate all of the comments and feedback and really excited and looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
First of all, thank you very much and also thank Mr. Ron Garcia and all the participants that are here today. Councilmembers have anything to share because I know they're going into a planning commission meeting. If, if, if not, at this point, I want also, um, my condolences. I know that our legal counsel is online is mother-in-law who just passed, I believe, uh, yesterday. So, Mr. Tapoyam, our condolences goes out to your wife, to you and your family on behalf of the city of Baldwin. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, uh, the council members will exit as the commissioners, I guess we'll probably all, uh, they're going to go into their commission meeting. Alright, thank you very much, planning commissioners. Thank you, people. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ron, just to confirm, we're switching over to the next Zoom uh meeting. We're not, we're not staying on this platform?
That is correct. So for now, uh, we can uh leave this meeting and now log into the planning commission meeting. Thank you.
Welcome to day two.
Thank you.